I'm Councilor October ninth, two thousand twenty-five. He can't avoid it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Let's say council as we do every, every meeting, we'll receive a copy of their agenda. Excuse me, not their agenda, their meeting notes from last, minutes from last meeting. Hope you have a chance to review them. Are there any questions, changes, amendments that need to be made? If not, any motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Isaac. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Go around the room.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Um, everyone got a copy of Melinda's treasure report? Any questions for Melinda on the treasure report? Okay. Right, wrong. Bills for payment. Everyone's, I'm sure, reviewed the bills. Is there any questions on any of the line items that we have for A.C. or Melinda or Chief?
Number four.
You know I looked right at three at you. Challenge points?
Yes.
That's being paid for with donation money.
The what?
It's, it's being paid for with donation money.
What is?
The challenge.
Oh, oh, okay. It's so it's all donation.
We're not paying for it, that's right.
It's not in the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you answer my question?
Any other questions?
What are challenge points, if I may ask?
Is, do law enforcement please have a coin for the departments that they can typically give out, right?
Right. Military started, started law enforcement. It's just like a, law enforcement trades them. You get some for the guys.
Yeah. So don't have some when you run into a deputy in Newport, New York.
Yes.
Calvin.
You should be patched.
Well, that's right.
You see, patch and bounce points, you're right.
Right.
Okay. Um, if there are no other questions about the, um, bills for payment, any motion to approve, please?
I make the motion to approve the bills.
Thank you, Sharon. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Claire. I assume no further discussion. Go around the room.
Yes.
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 Yes. Awesome. Chief, we got it for us today.
Uh, the radar missile program has arrived. If you remember correctly, this was a grant funded project. Twenty-five percent is the town's portion. This will be a great addition to the town. It'll display speed, other important information. The public office department and police department will be able to set this up if they, they need it. Uh, I hope they have it deployed in the next couple of weeks. We'll get insurance on it and get tagged. Also, I want to thank Councilmember Isaac Kelly for helping us off later from the trailer. Another grant, if you remember correctly, if you remember, was the ECGS hospital loans grant. I believe it was like eleven thousand seven hundred. I applied for funding. However, with the government shutdown, it's going to be, it's going to be delayed. Unless, right here is, already office George Breck.
Jordan.
He's been with us for about two months and he's doing a great job. And I'll let him, if he wants to stay, he can say it. If he wants to head on out here, he can head out here.
Tell us about yourself.
Started the sheriff's office, then I went to JMU, come here. So, loving this so far. It's a good change of pace from here, from JMU to here.
And where are you from?
Broadway.
Broadway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any of us, my little boy, they don't know each other.
They all were, so don't worry about it. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now, you can hang out here, you go, go to work.
I should work.
Sure you want to go there? Thank you, sir.
Nice meeting you all. Thank you.
Stay safe, Jordan.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it?
That's easy. Okay, we're going to public work today, see?
So, we've got a bunch of things listed on the agenda, as you all seen. I put a few things, at least one thing before that. Everybody's probably seen the progress on tractor supply. And we just signed off on the pound portion of the CO this week. So they're moving along and as far as they still have an opening date of November first.
I talked to Anthony Ray yesterday and they're having a soft opening the twenty-fifth. And then the grand opening November first.
Okay. So, that's going to be a great addition to the town. Lots of people interested in, in that. Um, we'll go ahead and move into the, um, the first agenda item, which is the solar farm. I'm not sure if that is the first agenda.
Let's do Church Street lot to meet you first.
Okay.
Let's, let's do something, get us knocked right out.
Okay. Get some progress. Sure. Okay. So, um, the representatives for the property came to the town. There's an, a party interested in purchasing one of the lots. Well, it would be that lot that I sent out in that paperwork. It would be, that person is interested in purchasing only one of the lots. So if you're looking at that lot D, where it's showing, uh, being divided, it would be the right-hand side of the paper or the eastern portion of that division. But it's the one that the House wasn't.
Okay.
Um, this was the planning commission. We've been, Quentin and I have been dealing with this, all of these properties for quite a few years now, trying to get everything, the whole properties, old deeds, and trying to get all the property lines straightened out, determined which ones are accurate descriptions and which ones are inaccurate. The planning commission reviewed this and as far as the lot division part of it goes, the planning commission made a recommendation to council to approve the lot division contingent upon meeting my satisfaction as the manager slash zoning administrator with the alignment of the lot lines. And which that ultimately means that I will hear from the county attorney on this when it gets figured out. And my satisfaction will be based on his satisfaction.
What do you have to say, sir?
If you're looking at this little packet, the first page shows you all the different colors lots. I want you to focus on lot D because that's the lot we're looking at. And lot D right above it. If you flip over, not to page two, but to page three, the one that has a dashed line and says lot line to be vacated. The issue right now is on Rockland County G.I.S. It is showing this as two lots there, that this lot line to be vacated as a separate lot line. But the title work does not line up with that. So one of the biggest issues right now is confirming the actual acreage with the surveyor so that the buyer and the seller can agree on the actual acreage and agree on the legal descriptions for the lots. So when we go to do this transfer, Rockland County will update the G.I.S. to accurately reflect the lots. Lot two is actually, if you flip back to the first, that lot D. When you take the survey lot points and you plot it out, it looks exactly like lot B and it comes out to about acres, eight acres. So that's one of the issues. The other issue right now is just confirming the actual acreage of this total parcel so that when we do the split between A and B, we get the right amount of acreage. Ultimately, what we will wind up with is something that looks very similar to this page, too. A and B. What you are presented with today is the residue of point nine two four acres. Are you, okay, splitting these, this parcel A and the residue to create these two parcels? The recommendation from planning commission was to approve the subdivision, so to create this, these two parcels, subject to confirming the acreage. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've looked at this too much already.
I have a question. Will that, how will you get in to lot C?
To lot C? Okay, so we're not dealing with anything related to lot C right now. When you look at that first page, we're only focused on really on lot D, but there'll be some impact on lot B. All of the access to these lots that we're talking about would be access off Church Street.
Off Church.
And there's sufficient frontage on Church Street to create these two lots.
Okay.
Technically, to answer your question, there is a road off of High Street that comes in to go to lot C. The problem is that is a substandard street. It was dedicated to the public but not dedicated as a road. It's about nine or ten feet wide. And so the B and C are undeveloped lots, and I think it would be very difficult for someone to develop either one of those lots because when it comes to the site plan phase, fire and rescue is not going to be able to access those lots. But that's me being speculative and that's outside our purview as a town.
But I knew about that.
Yeah. Straight. Yeah.
Because that would make it landlocked, correct?
Well, it has access. It's just a matter of it being developed.
Okay. Because that will come out?
It will come out.
Someday. Maybe. So basically, we're needing a motion to approve this page, this, this whatever, this page.
Yeah, the issue is, yeah, this, this second page, the one that, the blow up of lot D, that doesn't have a lot line to be vacated on it because it's technically not a lot line. The issue is still the acreage and it's because of the way the survey lines are drawn compared to the legal description and the title acres. But that's something for me to figure out. I think the real question for you all as a council is, do you want to approve the subdivision or not?
It meets all, it meets all the requirement, right?
It doesn't create any substandard lots, one company lots.
They're very long lots.
They're very long lots, yes.
But, you know, foot seventy-five feet and sixty, what is seventy-five feet? What is the frontage?
Definitely.
But the other one's not bigger than sixty-five?
It's sixty-five plus the twenty-seven.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I gotcha. So it's seventy-five and like ninety-two or something like that. If it doesn't have substandard lots, I don't know why we can't, why we wouldn't approve it. But I guess that's councils. It's up to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Go around the room?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from voting on this just because we have the adjoining property. Okay.
Sharon?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's talk about the proposed solar farm. So we received a letter from, um, the company that is proposing this project. It would be, it's not located in the town corporate limits. It's adjacent, it would be on property adjacent to the, to the county limits. But the county, being diligent in what they're doing, reached out to us and said, this is what's going on and let us know the comments. So we can just open it up. We've had, we put it out to on our social media pages because we knew that council would be, could be discussing this tonight. We put it on the agenda for discussion based on last month's meeting. And council, even though council doesn't have any kind of direct approval or denial power on this, you can formulate a request or an opinion or comment to send to the Rockland County on the proposed project. We put it out on social media so that we could give our residents an opportunity if they wanted to submit their opinion on, or thoughts on this project to the council so council could take those into consideration too. Because it does, it is right across the street, right across the road, American Legion Drive from Legion Hills subdivision. And it also kind of goes in behind some of the properties off of American Legion Drive at the top of the hill. So I provide everybody with the comments that we received. I know there's a petition going around and it is considerably over two hundred signers on that petition that I heard of last today. And we felt it would be better to take comment the way we did it because we, there really isn't a point for us because we don't need to hold a, a public hearing on it because that's what Rockland County will do on it.
And there's a meeting on it on the eighth?
It's this, this coming Wednesday.
Like two o'clock or something like that?
Right. And that's at the community center. It's an open meeting for anybody who wants to attend.
I do know the people who responded that there was no one in favor of the letters we received. The biggest, some of the biggest things expressed were, why would it be put in adjacent to, I mean, budding right up against a neighborhood versus, I don't know. I'm not saying it was better. It'd be better if it was a mile or two or something away from communities, but the big concern was it's put right up against the town or the town limits or subdivisions. There were other concerns about storm run and water runoff and what happens fifty years from now and things like that. To me, the big, bigger issue right now is in fact it's stuck right up against a subdivision, you know?
And that, and that land is not in the town's growth area, but that is the natural direction that the town will expand once the growth area is used up. We had no growth area one, all of our growth areas on the southeast side of town. And that's where part of that.
But that doesn't say if somebody wanted to develop that area, we couldn't provide them with water and sewer, correct?
We couldn't, yeah, we could provide the water and sewer and the, and the county.
We could annex them.
Well, the county's been really good. Like if we had an area that we wouldn't like to take in and the current growth area property owners don't, aren't ready to be taken in, the county's been really, really good to work with as far as amending the annexation agreement. And so you could have somebody knock on the door tomorrow and say, I want to put this housing development in on that property and we could be, be discussions at that point. I'm, I'm amending the annexation agreement to make that happen.
But we pretty well take, take the approach if we're going to give you water and sewer, we're going to annex it.
Yeah.
Which ought to make sense.
Anybody have any opinions, questions, comments?
I'm totally against it.
Okay.
The proposal, I don't think it's the right place for it. Another thing that bothers me is if the energy would be used locally, but from research that we've done, most of the damage is being transferred to Northern Virginia to power the artificial intelligent.
Data centers?
Data centers. It's not going to be used locally. You know, I'm very, not that anybody else is not, but I'm really concerned with the environment through my position, it doesn't work. And I've done a lot of research and thank heaven, my wife has done a lot of research to help me as busy as I've been, but it's just no good out of it. It poisons the land. Uh, it has noise pollution that affects cattle and dogs, and pests that could be local. It destroys prime wildlife habitat. You know, there's tons of research out there that I found and I think she's found that are more opposing the development of these things on, on land like that. I mean, like I said, two things, it's great agricultural land and we need to keep it that way, but also that could be later down the road when it needs there, you could develop that land. Once, once the solar panels are there, the land is basically useless from what I've found. I mean, even after the twenty years, after they're done, nobody, nobody wants to build one because it's basically made an undesirable place. And, yes, I only live about a quarter of a mile away. That has a lot to do with it too. But I've grown, I've driven around to several in Rockland County and Chandler County and ninety-nine percent of them, source sites. And if you want to build one out in the middle of a ten thousand acre field somewhere where, you know, and again, it's not good agricultural land. There's other places they could put this, but I'm, I'm opposed to it and I'd like the town to be able to go on record and present something to the county stating their opposition, opposition if it's agreeable to all of us. I mean, more than just talking about the seating, I'd like to see a resolution sent or whatever our attorney would call that, saying that we strongly oppose, you know, the approval of that application.
I think A.C. would pen a letter basically, right? So, is that what we do?
How are you all going to do it?
I did, I read a study, Virginia Tech did a study on the solar farm and the effects of them and, you know, it's one of those things about finding viable research. Virginia Tech showed that property values within a three mile radius of a solar farm actually decreases by four percent. And not only that, the only thing that the solar farm benefits is the air. That's it. Other than that, nothing, nothing is good about them explicitly if it's beside of a neighborhood, which generally they're not. It's, it's, it seems, it seems me, it's got to be rare that they put them right up against. If it was, like you said, it was way out of the way, if it wasn't visible. Sure, they, they say that they obscure it by putting plantings around them, but okay. On a big hill. You're still going to see the reflection from the panels. You're still going to hear the humming. You're still going to have the effects. You know, they don't even have a plan for how they dispose of these panels. They don't have the long-term research on the environmental impacts. While I can understand runoff, generally that's the least impact, believe it or not, because they have to meet the county's codes that are specific to solar erosion control. But everything else is, is nothing's positive about it.
Anybody else?
I just think it's not the right place for that, you know? It's right up against a residential neighborhood. It's not, no. I'm not in favor at all, at all.
No, I agree. I think we should send a letter to board of supervisors, but I'm talking to them and I will be attending the meetings, so. And if you want me to represent the county to move there, I'll be happy to do, but I'm going as a private citizen. I'm totally against it. If they want to power the data centers in Northern Virginia, then go north. But don't come and put it in our town.
I mean, this is a little, so how does power get from here to the data center somewhere else without?
Transmission lines?
But they got to install all new transmission lines?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It's my understanding too that unless you know it exclusively from the owner, that it gets absorbed into the, the energy lines itself and whoever owns it, so it's Dominion. Dominion Energy is probably the one who's going to benefit by it. They can then sell it to whoever. So unless you know explicitly from the owner and the agreement, you don't know where that power is going to. You can be subjective or you can project and say it could go to a data center, but unless you know what the agreement is, Dominion Power or Dominion Energy may or may not have an agreement and it could go, it could go, I doubt it's local. We don't know that. We're not privy to that. But nonetheless, it doesn't matter. It doesn't change a lot. It doesn't change the fact.
Yeah, it's just, it's just something I would wonder.
And the way I understand, the person that, that owns this land, he will get an income for forty years.
Yes, and that, and that's part of the study is that the owner and/or the landowner is the only one that will benefit by it.
Exactly.
While everybody in that three point four mile radius property values to go down, it's great.
Which is like the whole town.
Exactly.
And panels are made in China.
Excellent. Then any other, any other questions, concerns or anything? Then someone make a motion and we'll move on.
I'll make a motion that we recommend that the county decide on installing solar farm.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Go around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you all.
So, A.C.'s got a draft of it.
And you've heard some of the issues and you can just?
Reasons and we'll, yeah, I'll cite the reason and, and whatever.
Okay. We had a brief discussion, but the next thing on in the agenda is discussion about the Plains District Community Center. We've had some brief discussions about, how do you phrase it? Is it taking over or is it requiring, the possibility of requiring the community center? And in doing so, we were, um, to do so, we'd be basically moving our offices and combining the community center slash camp office. But that's an easy way to say it, I guess. A.C. did take the liberty to, I asked him today, I said, I'd really like to understand more of what that would look like. And A.C. gave everybody a little floor plan, floor plan of, you know, roughly what it would look like. Where you put the police department on half of the game room and you put the office on the half that's part of the office anyway. So, and I didn't come up with this all by myself.
Nope.
I actually took, I, I, originally I sketched it out trying to figure out what, what it would look like just roughly. And then the office staff, police department and Chris, we all worked on it one day and walked around to try to visualize, to look at what I had drawn up and then changed it and modified it probably quite a bit to make it fit what we're looking at, what I tried to express on the diagram here. So it was a, it wasn't just me with colored markers drawn on a piece of paper. I had a lot of input from everybody else and because they're the ones who are also going to be working there. So, you know, we always want to get the input as a group and try to figure out brainstorm a figure out like, how would we arrange this if, if we were to take this over?
Now, a question came up last time of the employees. I think John might have said, what's the employee's opinion on it? Is that, that would be the answer last time? What is, what is the employee's opinions on? At one point you were like, ah, I don't know. And what's the employee's opinions on if they would like to do this or not, just do this or not?
I know county office staff is very excited at the opportunity to move down there. With the opportunity to give us just the improvements over what we have here. It gives us a bigger workspace. It gives us a bigger workspace. It gives us better parking, obviously. Parking is kind of a big thing.
Do we pay someone to clean this office?
We do not.
Okay, well, we have to hire somebody to clean this since it's so much a larger area?
So, yeah, I mean, because they have a part-time, they have part-time staff down there. It's, it's really, so the community center currently operates, they're open 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the evenings, Monday through Friday. And then they staff it as needed on the weekends based on when their rentals are. So we were, we were thinking, the thought would be if we moved down there, just maintain that part-time person that would be able to do man after the different hour shifts and have that same person do the.
What would be the problem we don't have now?
Is that any cost that you showed us the other day when you said it was $20,000 more than we currently have? Was that, was that part-time person in that cost?
I'll have to, I can look at that for sure.
I would just like to make one comment for the people in the audience. Just if they want to come up with a deal to basically transfer a building, but not just the building, the operating of the community center goes along with the building. Leave the town, we become liable and responsible for maintaining the community center. And just wanted you all to know that.
That's correct. That's correct. The community center.
There was concern expressed at the last meeting about the programming going away. And our, our standard of the thought was that the programming that's already in place would remain. Part of that is because that's part of the revenue stream that's coming into that building already. So that is, you know, we wouldn't be lucky to get rid of any of the programming. In fact, we feel that because we would be there through the normal work hours, it makes it more accessible. But we actually had a meeting here at the county office three Fridays ago. It was a meeting that the Plains District Commission hosted and it's the Rural Transportation Technical Advisory Committee meeting. And we had it here because they didn't want to wait until late, I mean, the community center wasn't available because it's not open during those hours. So it's, I think one of the comments from one of the residents at the last meeting talked about the availability of it and it shouldn't be just for Timberville, it should be for the Plains District. When our, my vision is that it would still be the, a community center for the entire Plains District. It wouldn't.
But does, if, have you seen any, well, not suppose we haven't even talked about what kind of agreement in black and white. So we don't know if the county is going to say, you're going to continue it for the whole Plains area or whether you're just going to continue it for Timberville citizens. So we don't know that yet.
I guess, I guess why, why wouldn't it be open to anyone who wants to come in?
Well, like I'm going to go back to when we closed the pool. I'm, Melissa, when you can change it, I don't see taking town people's tax money and paying for something and keeping it open that the county benefits other than the town citizens. I mean, go to most any publicly owned pool you own.
But that's.
Towns aren't going to be getting income from renting that space out. Well, he figured that and we're still $20,000 under.
Well, that's based on what the county currently springs in.
Well, that's right. Who knows, it's not going to go down.
Who knows? You're looking for, you're looking for eight hours more a day.
Okay, that's fine.
You all know my opinion.
Okay.
So, but I don't.
But I would like to know though, based on when you looked at the difference in expenses, what were the employees? Because when you're talking about income and expenditures, was the employees in those expenditures?
That was in the county's cost.
In the county's cost?
Right.
And was that in the, the numbers that you gave us?
What we had done, we were just comparing what it costs right now down there and what it costs up here.
But what, what it costs down there, was the employees in there or just?
The employees down there, that cost was included in it. The county's cost of the employee was included in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you all said with the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And then the difference in what costs were in this building and that was 20 grand basically.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that wasn't 20 grand plus two more employees.
No, no. Those, those costs down there included the employee cost.
If you expand it for eight hours more a day, then we're going to include eight more hours later if we have somebody to keep it open.
Correct. Now, I would think that people.
We talked about that office, like current staff that's already sitting down there would be able to.
What, what's your concern about that? Like, I'm just trying to understand because it seems that you're very focused in on one, having staff to meet the needs of both running the town office and then also managing foot traffic coming into the community center.
When you talk to them now, they're, not just this staff, but everybody's looking at, we don't have enough help, we don't have enough help. If they're thinking that the business is going to increase at the community center, that means not only they're going to have to handle what's going on now, if it increases, they're going to have to handle that workload. Number two, if it was so great, why would Rockingham County want to give it away? Look at the one over, you know, I think it's Elton, that area. It's nothing but trouble. It's a, it's a burden. The building's old and antique as it is. I don't know if you would want to do anything to it, but it'll be investigated if it has any asbestos in it and you want to do the remodeling, you got to take that into consideration. But like I said, years ago, we got rid of, if it would benefit, and still I'm against it because I just don't think it's the, the best choice with the building. But in my honest opinion, the town does not need to get into the business of putting that community center or the Plains District. And that's what we're dealing with. Yes, you're going to have room to put in the offices, but you're going to be maintaining and operating and upkeep and liability of everything that goes with that community center.
Well, based on that principle, then we shouldn't be operating the parks for the Greater Plains District either. Because town money goes towards maintaining that and that's.
Yes, I think that's correct. And to me, yeah, if, it should be solely to me, the people that come in from the county that want to use it should pay a surcharge.
For parks?
For anything, yes. That the town owns that we make for a benefit for the wider community. If somebody wants to rent.
I'm saying no, because that's where, where in the United States do we have public parks that are run and maintained by municipalities that are then charging admission for?
Well, a different, I, I, I know what you're saying. A different way to look at it would be they come to our parks while they're visiting our parks or visiting our groceries.
Right.
Or visit our hardware stores or visiting our, while they're in Timberville, they're going to do something. Maybe while they're at the community center, they're going to spend money while they're in Timberville.
Okay, well, if somebody from out of town rents the ball fields, again, I don't know, I'm just, or somebody rents the pavilions or something like that or wants to have a company picnic.
Right.
Do they pay the same thing as if I wanted to go over and rent the pavilion as a town citizen per day? Anybody from out of town will pay the same?
Yes.
So see, that's why I have an instrument.
That's what I do, yes.
Well, and I understand that, but the way, the way that I was understanding what you were saying is that town facilities are only for town residents and that doesn't.
And you can set up a fee structure. No, that's, that's what we're saying, but that's what needs to be done. And I'm all, if you set up a fee, a fee structure, it's already in place and everything like that.
Right.
So, yes, that's fine, but I would not agree with somebody from Newmarket being Elton over there and rent the park or structure for the same thing as somebody would in town. We pay the extra money to keep that maintained and going.
I understand that and I agree with that. I was just kind of, I was misunderstanding what you were saying in terms of paying to use, like it just sounded like you're almost like advocating for charging admission, which...
Well, if, if the park was free to us, which it is, to, to use the park, yep.
When you say use the park, what is your definition?
Anything, something. I mean, I'm not going down and having a picnic and I'm taking your kids down and.
Dreaming.
And stuff like that.
Well, yeah, that's what he said. Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to know.
To rent the facilities or rent the ballars or say, we want to have a company picnic down here and we're going to close the whole park off today.
Okay, that is, I was getting fired up over something like I was not understanding. So.
And I'm not totally against charging an admission.
To, I mean, to the community center or to a park?
I've got to get that a little thought because you talked about, you know, where else in the United States is going to be doing it? Our pockets here go about this deep. The pockets, pockets that have these other things go about that deep. So, and right now, it's not, it's not called in the drain or a burden.
Right.
So it's, it's fine. I can see that called in the drain or a burden. It's our improvement, it's going to cost us $20,000 more a month operating.
No, a year.
A, a year. Okay, well, give it a year.
Yeah, it's not a month, it's a year.
So, based on that, and if the town employees and the people who work in this building every day are saying that this is not a sustainable either building or location for one reason or another, I know that you've proposed raising this, acquiring the lot next door and building another town office building. Like we, we, that has come up in discussion, not as anything official. I just like to feel like it needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 this is just, this is just.
That was strike the red.
Yeah, this is, this was border checking kind of thing.
I'm the favorite to keep the town hall here.
Why?
It's, matter of fact, it's limited, it's right at a major intersection, it's closer to the middle of the town, it's not like down here, close to industries that at times can make it very unappealing or not appeasing to be next to.
We're also not trying to pull traffic off of the road though, so a corner lot for a town office is kind of like.
It's convenient.
It's convenient.
I think, yeah, like.
But we're not trying to.
That's, that's fine. I mean, that's, everybody has their opinion and you're not, you're not going to be able to convince me because I'm too stubborn and too hominory and all to think that that is going to benefit the town. If it does, that's fine and I'm wrong and I'll eat my egg with it.
Right, but that's still, that McCauley Drive is still a busy drive and that people will know where the town office is.
Busy drive for the poultry plants.
How many people? I mean, yeah.
I'm going to think.
I think that.
Don't forget JJ's.
There's JJ's. I've got a lot of, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of traffic that isn't just poultry plant traffic that goes right there. And a lot of the people that work in the poultry plant live in this community, either immediately in the town or in adjacent, you know, in, you know, outside of the county. We're not doing a disservice to the town by moving, you know, a quarter mile down the road.
Could somebody be able to tell me why Rockingham County wants to pass it on? Why? I haven't heard that comment yet.
I think that because they want to focus on their new facility.
Yeah.
At Crossroads, the new.
On the east end, yeah.
They leave the night, take a big bag of cake. They don't need to put too much on their plate. They can't handle it all. Concentrate on keeping this one going.
Okay, we understand your thoughts. I think we got that one down. And I think I understand Isaac's saying. Let's just get some opinions over here a little bit.
I voiced it before, this is an antiquated location. It's extremely dangerous. I don't even like to come in here to park. I can only imagine what it's like to be an employee, come here every day. You think about your employment, it's your second home. So, you know, I think it's worthy to mention their work experience, their happiness, their safety, number one, in a structure that no longer serves its purpose in the sense that we have an option to upgrade. We upgrade our homes, why can't we upgrade the place where our employees work for the benefit of all those three, three ideals that I mentioned?
Okay.
I think the dollar value of what it is for sure is reasonable compared to what you still have to maintain here. And we can try to find all kinds of reasons why we think or may not think, we can't answer a lot of the questions. So, we have to go with what we know.
Eric? I'm going to have to force everybody to talk here.
I think this is a great opportunity that we really need to consider. The possibilities are endless here with this.
Okay. We, we need to look at, we need to look at all the numbers. I mean, I'm for the move. I'd love to have a new house, but we need to look at the number, you know what I mean? So, I'm for it. I just think we need to make sure that it's feasible and makes sense.
I think the first thing you get, I think the first thing you get to is if you're not for it, then you move on and we don't, we don't go any further.
Yeah.
If, if the county says we're really looking, if we want to do something, then you, you, AC gave us, I'd say, rough numbers. There might be more, there might be finer, I think they are.
Discussions with the county will get you the information.
I'm not as scared of it as long as you're telling me it's covering those extra employees that, that we need or whatever at a time. But again, you guys are one vote. Sharon?
Well, I agree with Isaac and I'd like to sit down with the county and talk to them. If they are interested in letting us have it, then I think they should be interested in talking to us.
Oh, of course, I'm sure they got to talk to you. But what's the conversation going to be? Conversation, what do you want to ask them?
Well, it's your time to talk.
It's her time to talk.
It doesn't matter who you talk to. No, I mean, I am.
I'm just interested and I'm, I'm not.
I would like to pursue it, but I do want to have the money invested.
So what are some of the questions you'd ask to AC when, if, if we vote and we decide to pursue it, AC could prep on them saying, here's the kind of questions we want, we want to hear.
I want to know why they're interested in giving it up. I want to know all of the money, how much it costs.
And I think AC has a lot of that, we'll verify that.
Okay. How much is the upkeep a year?
I think it's in those numbers, but we can verify that.
Okay. The employees, will the employees stay? Well, of course you don't have that, so.
What obligations we have to the county after we take ownership of.
I would, I, I think, and you might have mentioned it at one point, that when, say you were to take something that's over, they're in that contract of taking over, there's something that says this is what is expected from the county, the county expects you to, you mentioned something along that line.
I would anticipate the county would have some sort of expectation, memorandum of understanding, something related to the community center aspect of it continuing.
I mean, I just don't want the county to tell us what we will be doing when we own it because we pay taxes to Rockingham County and Timberville.
I, I think the idea of having a sit-down meeting, like I think you'll get Casey Armstrong and whoever the, I guess Dewey, right, superintendent?
Yeah.
Supervisor for this area would come and talk to you about exactly what they want to do. I mean, that's what they've done in other areas of the county.
I don't like hearsay. I like mouth say to my face.
Yeah.
Mouth say?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, what would, if we wanted.
You've got a consensus?
Yeah, I have something else to say though.
I just, and part of the questions I would require from the county, an asbestos inspection before we would ever consider that. And, you know, and I, I would like to have an inspector inspect the building, a building inspector, not related to the county, not related to the town, somebody else inspect the roof, say, okay, that roof's got five more years in it, you're going to spend $150 to replace the roof. I mean, it's easy for me or somebody else to go down and look at and say, well, yeah, that looks good for 10 years, but I think we need to have.
And we cover some of this up because Chris met with, Chris has met with a lot of contractors down there to kind of like the roof and things like that.
Right, and I'd rather have a professional inspector, and I think it needs to be provided for by the county and not the town.
Exactly. But now, I don't imagine asbestos, that's just every model.
When someone basically given you something, why would you require them to do?
To me, that's what they're going to be required to do if they want to get rid of it that bad. I mean, have you ever seen the money in the movie, The Money Pit? Where the guy buys his house and looks great and they don't think they're seeing any money anymore?
I understand the inspection, but I just, I don't understand when someone's giving you something, you're going to make them spend money to give you something. With the age it's going to have, probably lead paint and somewhere.
Well, you should do that. You don't.
Like you said, they're giving to us.
When they, when they remodeled the floor and scraped up all the floors and put down the tiles and all that and put them.
Generally, when a structure goes through, and I know this because of my background, I know that when a structure is, goes under remodel, that they are required by law to have an asbestos lead testing. I do that myself where I work.
So they might have, they might have asbestos lead testing already done.
They, that's fine, they already. They're already going to have the results. And so therefore, if there would have been any suspect ACM, anyone who were led, it would have already been taken care of.
Right.
So, the only time that becomes pertinent is if it becomes disturbed.
But that's good, I mean, it's, it's another question to have. So, I guess, what, what would a motion be today to move this one direction or the other?
I'll make a motion that we ask to have a meeting with the county representative.
About our desire to.
Yes, yes.
Do you have an emotion for that?
The, the big question is, who else is going to participate in this?
Are you going to have a full council meeting? Are you going to try and ask them to?
I prefer, oh, sure.
Can we make a motion to just say we're going to pursue with potential?
Let's think we have to discover it.
We're going to pursue the study and.
I don't think you need a resolution, I think what you need to do is say that you want to invite the county to come to the next council meeting to talk about what the next steps are going to be. You got some questions for them, you want to ask the questions, get it out, and you'll.
Well, do we want to have it at the council meeting, or do we want to have just a work session with them?
You haven't had a lot of work with work sessions like this.
If, if we weren't, if we were to bypass having the meeting hypothetically, I'm not advocating for it, but what would be the next step in this process if we were interested in pursuing, like, if we wanted to take on the community center?
We would talk to the county attorney about terms, and get some type of agreement together. Whether it's going to be a sale or a donation, or give, memorandum of understanding.
I'm just saying, I mean, we don't, there's no type of contract or agreement, right? This is just an offer, so it very possibly could be offered somewhere else if we're here, like, dragging our feet. So, if we say we want to, maybe even say get this contract started contingent on feasibility for the town as long as they, they want to put us belly up, like.
No, I don't, I don't, I understand what you're saying.
You don't think they're going to.
I don't, I don't think there's, uh.
No rush.
I don't think there's a big open market for community centers to be sold, honestly. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think there's a chance that it'll be.
I don't want them to be like, geez, we're trying to give you something.
So, I don't want to under you, because I think it's, it'd be a worse showing for the county if they just closed it and sold it to the poultry plant or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, it's like, I feel like we're kicked, we've kicked it down, the can down the road so many times already, it's like, we need to.
Let's have, let's have, let's have, um, so we just, I would still, I'd rather have a, rather sit-down meeting instead of, but we can do it here.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the, the council members coming compiling with AC a, a list of questions. And we all don't have to meet that way. Uh, and, you know, again, if there's enough votes to carry, you can make the votes and say, hey, we contacted him and say, somebody wants to make that motion, get a second, and it carries, you know, no need for a meeting. But I feel that we should, and just like you said, you're not going to get any of the supervisors to come to this meeting. You're going to get the county administrator and probably assistant county administrator, well, that's what AC represents for us. And then any kind of proposal definitely has to be gone over by our attorney, you know, to see if anything's wrong there.
Doing will come.
Well, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and give, give AC a list to compile and make it, you know, a up-to-the-point kind of list, like, if I'm, if I'm making, let's try not to talk in total generalities when we give them a list of questions. You know, let's say it's something they can, they can truly give a yes or no to, no real what-ifs, you know? No what-if COVID comes back kind of thing, and what do we do then kind of deal, but, you know? Straight to the point answers, and let's get it to AC, let's get it to them, and if he gets out, if the council likes to sit down and talk about these, and they, they may answer them right off the bat, and we can sit there and look at them, we're good. Central?
Yes.
Can we move on from this one? Also, public works, AC, anything else? I don't have a can.
I've got others on the log.
Um, you go to your turn.
Uh, I can't. No, that's everything on, um, on public works that I have.
And the one thing I forgot to mention again is, at the end of, um, public comment, we have to go with, uh, we have to do a closed session on acquisition of land for public purposes and, um, some litigation stuff, so just give everyone a crack, that would be sending it home a little bit early while we stay here. So, nothing else for public works?
No. This is maybe a question for me, outside of all the stuff we've already discussed.
I think so. Business industry, you already talked about, tractor spot.
I put this at everybody's spot, too, I want to, we're trying to promote this for the Phillips Lottery. It's their, um, 50th anniversary, and so I think they're looking, really hoping that people turn out for coming to this in one half day.
November, November 8?
And we'll be putting some of that stuff on social media, too, to help, help them promote that.
Okay, um, parts of rep?
We've already discussed everything, we've got the truck or treat, it's coming up, um, yeah, not, two weeks from today, right? Yeah, two weeks from today.
And we'll be ready to.
The Nerf and Legion Park.
Be ready to use our new message board?
Hopefully, I'll get that button. It's the DMV.
Oh, we know the police.
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks to you.
Finance, we don't have to worry about the budget right now.
No, um, auditors completed their work, um, I'll be working, uh, the rest of this month on the management's discussion and analysis section of it, and hopefully to be able to get that report out to everybody for next month. And then, uh, we had some developments on the large, on the large development out on the north end of town. Most people know this, the Liddy Waters property, um, there was a lot of years of delinquency on taxes on that between the town and the county, and we talked about it years ago, um, it wasn't, it wasn't cost effective for the town to pursue so many parcels, but the county is now pursuing that, um, and we piggyback on that on the county when that happens. Our delinquent taxes, how much are we owed, Melinda?
It's over $22,000.
Yes, and so, um, hopefully we'll be able to get that collected when we're, we actually had representatives of the property come in the other day and talk to Melinda, just generally, briefly, about the interim payment plan. So, hopefully we'll be able to start collecting notice.
The procedure for you all that are new that haven't dealt with that before is, when there's a piece of property that, there's delinquent taxes, the county or the town could, uh, do a judicial foreclosure to foreclose on the property to satisfy the outstanding tax debt. It almost never makes sense for the town to do it because it's cost prohibitive. With a large project like that, you're getting close where it would make sense for the town, but it really makes sense for the county. We would push the county for a year and a half to try and propose, um, and now they've started the process. Because they've started the initial notice period, the representatives are now saying that they may enter into a payment plan of some type, which would be good, but the real goal would be to see, would see them to either develop the property or sell it before developing, because it's, you know, it's right in the town, there's already some uh, infrastructure in the ground.
Talk about, you went back, you worked on your management portion of the audit.
Right.
Explain it, because I, I, up till last year or so, I always thought the auditor did it, but that section, you do the whole.
We did, they did until we changed audit.
Oh, I got you.
So, um, yeah, so we switched to auditing firms three years ago, um, and so from that, since that point, I've had to do it. And basically, it's me going through, all of the numbers you see in the management's discussion and analysis, I have to go through and pull, pull all of that information out from what the auditors provide, and to show an accurate reflection in that discussion and analysis.
It's just a happy thing for you to do, and you do a good job on it.
It's one of those things, it's just. I look so forward to it each year. The auditors are really good, though, of, I'm, I'm getting a, a good primer made up on how to actually do it so that I have a guide each year. It's one, we have so many of those things, and we stumbled upon it recently this week, with, there are tasks that we do once a year, and it's like, I don't know how you're supposed to do that, because we don't do it frequently enough, and it's almost like we're running a task, you know, each year, um, it is frustrating, but, um, but the auditors are really good at helping us, uh, helping me do that, and, and I call them, call up our email, we're chugging that out from, and they're explaining to me how to pack, it makes sense, so.
Personnel, how's our, how's our hunt going?
We have done the interviews, we've completed the interviews, um, for the marketing events, had an assistant, um, position, and we finally came to a conclusion today on who we are going to make the offer to. It, it was tough, I mean, this is probably one of the toughest ones that we've ever, we had, um, we interviewed four individuals, and, um, we had three that were really, really qualified, and it was a very, I mean, we were, we were all over the place with it, and contacted references, and I think the references kind of were what gave us that little nudge of who we should offer to, so we'll be doing that, um, first thing in the morning.
Oh, okay. So, a couple of weeks, we'll have a new employee, maybe. Anything else, personnel, chief?
I'm just extremely proud of the police department, these guys work hard, so I'm very, I'm very pleased with the process of the police this time.
And, and the council can ask later, but he's ordering some special patches for Halloween and Christmas for police officers to wear, just as a, let's have fun.
Share this with the donation money as well.
Y'all have a Christmas, so, Christmas.
Don't pick on.
Timberland and, uh.
If you don't want to see it, I can push it on the phone.
Yeah, just check it out where you are, it's, it's very cool.
No, that's fun.
Um, okay, personnel, museum?
Uh, this Sunday at 2:00, we're hosting Meet the Riders of the Chimney Rock Chronicle.
Okay.
So, all the riders that ride for the Chimney Rock Chronicle, I'm explaining this to you, so I want you to come.
They said rider first.
Writers.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, I like that magazine, or paper. Okay, what do you got for us? I don't see any papers.
No, we don't have any, but I think we've had enough for tonight.
Well, we're going to, we're going to keep going. Okay, other business, council, anything else before we have public comment?
Well, now, a couple of weeks ago, he gave a talk at the museum, which, excellent.
How did Mr. McCauley go? I was out of town at.
Excellent. Can I share something with you all, do we have a minute, one minute?
We got all night.
Mr. McCauley only went to ninth grade of high school, then he went into the service, he passed all of the tasks to fly. When he left the military, he applied to a college, and they said, ah, you only have a ninth grade education, but he was so persuasive, they said, we'll give you a trial. He graduated with chemical engineering degree.
Have you read his book, a little book he has, or his, he's flying bombers?
I grew up with Mark, 19 years old, mom and dad.
And it was, I hadn't seen Mark in years.
In his combat experience, I always liked talking to Mark's dad about all that.
And then Mark.
More following, yes, I mean.
Yeah, 19 years old, flying a bomber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Things under other business.
Other business again?
Town office will be closed on Monday in observance of the holiday.
For holidays?
Columbus Day.
Oh, is it?
When you're retired.
I'm not, you know, it is Thursday. And then I'll be out of town Sunday, Monday, Tuesday at, uh, the M Co Conference, A and B M Co Conference.
This weekend?
This, this coming, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, okay. Any other, other business? Then, public comment, we got a couple of publics here. Anybody want to make some comments? Okay, then.
Forgot one thing.
Oh, okay.
Make sure you congratulate Nathan, he passed his border license.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so I just wanted to make sure all the councilmen, people.
It's class six or what?
Yes. He's also applied for the second one, so he's just. Confirmation. Just like. Make sure.
And it's six, five, four kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Congratulate him for. Sure will.
Okay, let's, let's take, uh.
Did we? We didn't do Duke's root control, did we? I skipped that, you know? We've missed that, we've missed that for a couple of times, so let's, let's get back and get that, I missed that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The Duke's root control, that I sent about, Duke's root control.
It's, it's the 15, it's $15,000 over a three-year period?
Two, two years.
Two-year period, and it's, and it's good for how long?
The first round is two years, and then after that, after the first round, it's a three-year contract. If we have a backup, they've come in and treated for them, and they have done that before.
And you were talking, AC was talking about, first he said using $15,000, added that line item, you're talking about using the 75 pointer this year, save that for next year.
Chris came up with the schedule, that we could do, we could do half the treatment in April, which is our term fiscal year, and then we could do the other half in August, which would be the next fiscal year, and that way, we don't deplete that, two quarters of that, um, capital improvements, um, allocation that we put in budget a year, each year for the collection system.
Do you recommend this, Chris?
Just maybe.
Then go, then, go. Whatever it is.
I don't know whether it's a good time to bring up what I questioned.
Sure.
I mean, this is not as a town representative, this is town, this is being the manager for a waste treatment plant. It carries, that product carries a, uh, quaternary ammonia compound, which is extremely detrimental to our biological waste storage system, so Chris was kind enough to provide me with the contact information. We had a busy day, uh, didn't get time to call a guy back, but he was, he could talk to me, and, you know, relieve my fear because the di quad dibromide is a very toxic biological treatment, and it becomes, might not slow it down, but makes your water toxic. Well, at periods of time, I'll tell, about three years ago, we had issues with passing our toxicity test at the plant F plant. A year and a half ago, we started passing that 100%. Now, if that's, I don't know if that's related to anything to this, because I never knew it before, I mean, I knew that the town's treating lines, I got the same question going to Broadway into Newmarket, you know, if they use these same people, well, then it's fine, I, I just want him to be able to answer the questions, because when we look at the MSD issue, it does say that it's actually toxic to some of the trees that we use in our toxicity test.
How long have we used it for?
Um, longer than I've been doing. Yeah, and.
Okay.
There has been.
But in, within the last three years, you've used it. Have you? Okay, and you said you've been good the last three years?
Last year and a half. So, maybe, yeah, I kind, I really support the idea that the town approved him to do those two doses. I think, um, I think he's eager to talk to you. Yes.
Obviously, he's a.
But I think that's good, because even if, if it is something that may cause a problem, doesn't mean it will.
Yeah, and you're not.
It's a possibility, but if we can do it with two doses.
And you're not doing it 2007, you're doing.
No, but the residue is there.
Yeah.
Like, you can just a little bit of flat note.
Yeah, that's great.
I talked to him today, AC had a couple of questions for me, it's a gallon, and I know, I know which, you know, um, it's a gallon I have.
Right.
Um, in a 300-gallon tank, and that. Eight of eighty in the slime, so if that's.
No, that, yeah, so, I think it's, I think that takes, you know, everybody's very free to think about it, and, yes, in, in a very small amount, but a 300-gallon gallons that we do a day, if it tolerates that, we lose it out enough, that year. And that's a 30%, or what would say AC, 34%?
37%, I think is what's a di quad.
Right. Just, you know, no, that's good, and that's questions I've had for him when I got a chance, they're calling, but I appreciate it. Like I said, it's just.
Okay.
The question that I've been involved with that, and those issues that I have, I had to.
And the other question, I think, if I ask you to talk it, Jeremy's with it, he, he worked out the deal with the contract, and we don't have to do it, we can do that next month, probably.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, um, it's, uh, he's decided to go, not go with the, he's going to body cameras, not the in-car camera, because it, police departments certainly aren't using as much anymore, and, um, it saves basically $5,000. And so we're going to have like 20 something, 23,000 dollar a year renewal, but what to lock into, you have to do it this year. But I was asking, when is our, it's, uh, we have 2.7, so we're going to have to do a budget amendment. Uh, because 23, if you're more than 1%, you have to do a budget amendment, so 27,000 is 23, so we won't have to do a budget amendment, we'll just have to get approval for it over here. So, are we done? Public comment, anybody want to come through and make a comment? If not, this, this council will take a five-minute break, then we're going to close session.
You get it, I missed it, I was looking at a few, did he get it? Go ahead with that, with what? The deals?
Oh, yeah, no, but that's, I'll try, I'll, I'll call, but like I said, it, uh.
Yeah.
Give me a motion, okay?
I make a motion that we do it, as proposed.
Second. All favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay, keep, keep me honest.
And like I said, my biggest question was, a little bit of having like the documentation, how much would we use, literally, you use, if we have a file six months later, and we test our water, we find out in it, but then we know maybe next time we need to.
I was not.
No more than that, he says.
Yeah, I had no idea, that's how, that would take a break.
Then we go around doing that, go to close.
No, 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 no.
All right, then, any recess?
Let's stay at recess for about five minutes, and then we're going to close session, and everyone can head on out if they want.
We got it.